All right, looks like the number has stopped. So, um, good evening and I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School District. Today is April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and we are going to start with the roll call. Ms. Lewis, can you please take the roll?
Yes, Dr. Baker. Dr. Baker? I've got my.
Here, I'm here.
You're here. Okay, that's what you have to say. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Matthias?
Present.
Ms. Shaqkey?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
President Grant?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Support.
All right, great. All in favor, can I please hear an aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, same sign? All right. We are going to move to our first action item, which is a resolution for COVID-nineteen board meeting rules and public participation in electronic meetings. Just for a little bit of background, we clearly understood that we could not hold meetings in the same way during this time. So, we needed to make, um, some slight adjustments to meetings. We wanted to make them as easy as possible for the public to provide public comment and to be a part of these proceedings as well as ourselves. And so, this particular policy is to be in place for this time. Once we are past this time, we will make a standing policy as a board for electronic meetings in the event that we need to have them again. But this is specific to COVID-nineteen. Does anyone have any items for discussion around this piece? We, we need to approve this piece to be able to hold this virtual meeting tonight, which is why it is the first thing on the agenda.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. Support.
Lewis, can you please take the roll?
Yes. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Did I hear you?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqkey?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And President Grant?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have celebrations and I will hand it over to Dr. Gorman.
Madam President, members of the board, in this very difficult time, I would like to use the celebrations portion of the agenda this evening to recognize the essential workers in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Uh, as of today, we have distributed seventy-five thousand meals, uh, to the families in Grand Rapids. It's something we're very proud of. Uh, I would like to give a shout out to many of the essential workers right now, so please bear with me for just a second. Our security team, uh, for working all of the food sites, uh, monitoring many of our buildings and just keeping everyone safe at this time. Folks from supply who are, uh, driving the food trucks from the, uh, nutrition sites, uh, every single day to the food sites, uh, so that we can distribute, uh, food to our families. Folks in the facilities department who've been ensuring that our buildings are still up and running and making, uh, periodic checks on those buildings. Of course, folks in nutrition services, uh, it's amazing, uh, five days a week, folks are packaging lunches for our families. Lots of smiling faces as they're doing it. Uh, we could not do this work without them. Of course, payroll, uh, everyone's getting paid in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Uh, the benefits department, uh, uh, many administrators who continue to work. And last but not least, the, the many volunteers who show up at the sites every single day, uh, with smiles on their faces, ready to serve the community. So, uh, thank you this evening for allowing me to recognize many individuals. There's, there are so many others, but I really wanted to give a specific, uh, recognition to those individuals. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Absolutely, thank you. And I would like to thank you. I know that how many hours you have put in, but also your team. This is something that's affecting us around the world right now and there is no handbook for how to get through this. So, thank you all for reacting quickly and really going over and above to try to provide the best education that we can in this time for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Next, we, do we have Ms. Benson with us today as our student, for our student rep? Craig, I don't know if she's here or.
Ms. Grant, if she isn't, we take.
So, it's just going to take a moment for her to join us, but then Ms. Benson will give us her report. Ms. Benson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful. We are ready for you to provide your, your report. Thank you for joining us.
No problem. Um, so during this, uh, break, I've been doing a lot of reflecting and preparing for whatever may happen with like, um, if online schooling happens or with meetings. And so, I've been working on, um, optional schoolwork and getting some readings done. I'm checking on my friends because it's important to make sure that everyone's good, everyone's taking care of theirself. And also taking, um, taking care of like the older people that I know, making sure that they have water. Um, since they're high risk, I don't want them to be leaving their house. So, just checking in on them. That's been mostly my update for this break.
Thank you. Okay, um, I will move on to our other reports. Thank you, Ms. Benson. Uh, we have no secretary's report or committee chair updates for today, but we do have a superintendent's report.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Grant. I, I would like to give an update on many of the things that would, that have been happening in the district as it relates to COVID-nineteen and, and our response efforts. Uh, pre-April two, uh, I, I have some items that I would like to share and then I want to share what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. So, of course, we worked very quickly when the governor suspended schools, um, first time out. Uh, we have created online resources that can be accessed at GRPS.org. Uh, there are tremendous amount of resources. If you go to GRPS.org, that can be accessed for every grade level and also every content area. Uh, the governor was very specific with the first order that these activities were enrichment only, no new learning, because all means all. And if we can't guarantee that all students are getting learning, uh, then we have to, of course, follow, uh, enrichment activities and review activities. Uh, we have been distributing not only, uh, food at our sites, which I referenced before, seventy-five thousand meals. We also, uh, distributed two thousand grasp materials. That's our summer program for families that do not have internet access. So, we've distributed two thousand books. We've set up an action line at three zero one, 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 one. We've been documenting those calls and we have, uh, ensured that we have, we're ensuring that we have called back every single one and finalized every single question that's out there with an answer. We had seven food distribution sites that we manned Monday, uh, Wednesday and Friday. We scaled back this week to Monday and Thursday to keep our employees safe. So, we're now doing it Mondays and Thursdays. Same amount of meals, just doing it in two days. Uh, we worked with consultants to review best practices as it relates to distance learning. Uh, we, we had a pretty good inclination that the, the governor was going to close schools, uh, a little longer than she actually did the first time. Therefore, we put some efforts in place and worked with some consultants to ensure we were examining best practices so that we could put a distance learning model in place. We, uh, observed distance learning platforms and I will share some of those when I get into, uh, the plan. Uh, we have now post-April two, when the governor made her order to close all schools. We have cleaned, tagged and packaged four thousand devices. We have set up distribution sites in geographic areas throughout the city. So, when it's time to distribute devices for those families who do not have devices, uh, we will, we'll be set up and ready to go. We've acquired hotspots, uh, so that for, for families who do not have internet, they will have internet. We've also worked with internet essentials with the cable providers to ensure that folks, uh, who do not have hotspots will have internet. We have, uh, worked on our learning plan. We finalized it, uh, as of Saturday with the GREA and MEA. Uh, we have produced professional learning for approximately two thousand employees. The administrators are this week and then later, if the, uh, continuity plan is approved, I will get into timelines later in the agenda. And, uh, we have created, uh, professional learning for both synchronous and asynchronous learning formats. That is not an exhaustive list. There's much more than that, but I want to tell you about some of the efforts that we put forward to ensure that all fifteen thousand kids have, uh, education moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have action items. The first item for action tonight is our resolution for continuing, continuity. Sorry.
Learning plan.
Um, so I am going to turn it over to you, Dr. Gorman, again, just to give an introduction to this.
Absolutely. So, the continuity of learning plan.
Thank you.
We have, uh, per the governor and her executive order, we have until the twenty-eighth to get our learning plan, uh, moving and implemented. Uh, we again sat with the, uh, representatives from our team, worked with the MEA and GREA on Saturday, uh, to collaborate about our plan. Our plan has, uh, two learning platforms, one of which is something called Seesaw. That's for kindergarten through fifth grade. The sixth through twelfth grade portion is called Google Classroom. For kindergarten through first grade, we will be using iPads or tablets. And then for second grade through seniors, we'll be using Chromebooks. Again, we have acquired internet services from the cable providers. And you will see in the purchasing agenda this evening, uh, we have also, um, made plans to get our hotspots for families who do not have internet access. We will also be moving forward with, uh, paper pencil plans for those students who live in areas, areas where they do not have access to the internet. Uh, within our continuity plan is, uh, professional learning plan as well. Again, I referenced, uh, that the administrators are going through professional learning this week. Uh, we're hopeful that the plan will be approved. Therefore, we will move into professional learning for teachers, uh, next week. Uh, we are going to also move forward with a plan for technology distribution in the near future with the approval of the plan. And I'll walk through specific timelines at that time. Also included, uh, in your packet is the Child Discovery Center Content Continuity of Learning Plan, which is relatively comparable, uh, to ours. They, of course, have a Regio model of instruction, which, uh, lots of project-based learning, uh, lots of, uh, things that can be done with family members. They essentially have many items in their plan that's comparable to ours. So, we're hopeful that you will approve the plan this evening and then we can move forward.
Okay, I would like to open it up for discussion. Uh, if you all have questions, please pause a moment before you begin to speak, just so we make sure we're not all speaking at once.
I do have a, a quick question. Just, I know we did a survey trying to assess, uh, household needs from a technology perspective. Uh, knowing the survey race, I'm sure the response, um, was, you know, pretty, definitely not complete. So, I wonder how we feel in the blanks as far as assessing that.
Absolutely. So, we communicated with our families this week to find out who needs, uh, computers. We have been following up, uh, by phone. Of course, we have, uh, sending folks links and things of that nature. We are also working with our building principals. We will be working with our teachers to fill in many of those gaps. But when we get to technology distribution, Mr. Ross, it's going to be a very seamless process. Uh, parents will, uh, complete an, an online form. If they don't have access to online, we'll make accommodations. Uh, they will pull up to one of the distribution sites. The, uh, their trunks will be open, will put the devices in the trunks and then they pull off, ensuring, uh, the safety of our staff and also the safety of the individuals who are pulling up. So, we're going to be working very closely with principals and teachers to ensure that the students who aren't logging in every single day get those resources as soon as possible. I'm hopeful that we can get as many folks online as possible, but I know that we may need, we may have some folks who may need paper pencil resources. They may need to consult with teachers, uh, via telephone. We're going to have an all-encompassing approach, Mr. Ross. But, uh, again, that's one of the challenges at the beginning. Do you need to distribute four thousand computers or six thousand computers or a hundred computers? We, we believe, uh, we packaged four thousand, so we're ready to go. But, uh, again, only time will tell.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this item?
Well, just in, in, uh, following up, if I may, um, a, a, and so, are, in real time, are we getting, are, are you getting responses back from households that have, uh, internet access and have computers so that you can check them off and say, okay, we know so-and-so or X hundred or thousand are taken care of?
Yes, I, I've really, I've really been trying my best in, in the videos and the communications to underscore that these devices are for folks who need them. Uh, there are some families we know already that they are, that their students are logging on. Uh, many, many families before we put out our plan, or I'm sorry, many teachers and principals before we put out our plan are kind of just informally checking on their students. And so, um, no, our, our job is to ensure that all students have the devices. But of course, if on that first day of school, if there are students who are not logged in, we put our plan in place to get them logged in as soon as possible and to find out what, find out where the barriers are. We will need assistant principals, we will need counselors, we will need principals, we will need our youth advocates, all of whom to follow up and find out why students aren't logging in and then we will remove those barriers. And we will be keeping track of folks who are logged in every single day. So, yes, to your, your question, Reverend Matthias.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Support. Lewis, can you please take the roll?
Dr. Baker? Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Don't nap on us. Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqkey?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Dr. Baker, don't let Ms. Lewis show you up on Zoom meeting.
Everything was frozen for a second. I even missed the motion, so, so, I mean, I knew we were recording.
Well, don't tell us that.
Not take a nap when I'm calling roll.
Okay, so the next item that we have for an action item is the superintendent transition contract. This, uh, piece is, uh, something that we spoke about in our last work sessions, uh, several weeks ago. This piece is to help onboard Dr. Roby. So, this was originally proposed before, um, everything took place with COVID-nineteen. And we knew that even though her first day to start is July first, that we wanted her to be as up to speed as possible coming in. We all agreed to that as a board, so it was more about crafting an agreement to see what did that look like? Where the agreement landed was ten days between that time and July first, where she would, was open to traveling to Grand Rapids and spending time learning our buildings, learning our staff, meeting with Dr. Gorman and really getting as up to speed as possible on what's happening with the district. Those dates, because we had exact dates for you when you first received this information, obviously, those dates were not possible. They were March and April dates. Um, but we are still hoping at some point that she will be able to come here before July first. Dr. Roby has been on, um, several weekly calls every week for the past four weeks with staff, with myself, with Dr. Gorman. And she has been doing that, um, free of charge, making sure that she is keeping up to date with what's happening throughout this time as well as sharing some best practices with us and really, uh, sharing what is happening in her district since they are going through the same thing and we've been able to share information. That's been very helpful. So, we would still like to put this ten-day plan in place. We do not have exact dates for you now because we just do not know, but we know that we want her to be as up to date as possible once we get on the other side of this so that we can really hit the ground running. Is there anyone who may have any questions around this?
Yes, just to, just to, uh, clarify, um, um, she has signed a contract, she is coming and we're onboarding.
So, the next item, the next action item, it seems like so long ago, but we did as a board go through the proposed contract for her. And we, we all, uh, did that over a month ago. We were also shared the updates from that conversation and the negotiation with Dr. Roby over a month ago. But we have not voted on it yet because of everything happening with COVID-nineteen. So, that will be the next action item that we have. But first, we're voting in the transition contract and the next will be the full contract. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent transition contract?
No motion.
Support.
Who is that support?
Tony.
Tony. Okay, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Shaqkey?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Next, we have the full contract for the superintendent and this contract would span July first of this year through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two as the first contract for Dr. Roby. Um, I'd like to open it up for questions if there, if there are any or discussion items.
I do have a, a question now. As I reviewed it, I saw the annuity, um, piece and it seemed like when we had our conversation at the work session, there was some uncertainty whether or not, uh, Dr. Roby would elect MIPSers or some alternate retirement piece. And I see when I saw the annuity, that leads me to conclude that there are probably both being offered. So, that did give me some question. And I did check out, uh, some of the information, uh, I guess, uh, other superintendent contracts. And I know many do have both. Um, but I guess I still was just trying to think through this and I just wanted some conversation because as I look at the overall package, um, uh, while I definitely don't want our superintendent to, to feel slighted in comparison to other superintendents, I think the contract is, uh, very hefty and very rewarding. And I just have some question about the additional annuity on top of what we contribute to MIPSers. And just wanted if there were concerns from anyone else.
Yeah, I remember. Let's see.
Wasn't the concern that we didn't know if she was in MIPSers or not?
Yeah, that was part of the original conversation. And, and as a result, I left that conversation thinking that if, if MIPSers was the route, then that would be the route as opposed to MIPSers plus an annuity.
And for clarification, I just want to share for something Mr. Ross was saying, that it's not uncommon for superintendents, um, to have both of these in their benefits as well as, um, Ms. Pitts is confirming that she is in MIPSers, uh, but as well as her amount is not exceeding or larger than, um, superintendents in surrounding districts. So, I do want to clarify that. But Dr. Gorman, would you like Ms. Pitts to chime in?
She absolutely can, Ms. Grant.
And it might be a few moments in transition, but Ms. Pitts, um, can you join us? You, you don't have to join us with video if you're not prepared, but Craig, can you have her join us?
Yeah, and while she, while we're waiting her to join us, um, actually, I did do look at some confirmation. You write the annuity itself, definitely it's not, um, uh, extraordinary in comparison to others who have annuities. However, the overall package itself is, I won't say it's extraordinary, but as it sits, it's definitely, uh, one of the, one or two or three, uh, overall compensation packages in the state. And, um, while again, I'm, don't necessarily have, uh, huge issue with that, I do have some concern with a first-time superintendent who to some degree is unproven for us as a superintendent. Uh, so I feel like we don't have much room to offer additional conversation moving forward that would or would not be inappropriate depending on where we start.
Um, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, you, uh, had asked if we would, uh, go back and see, uh, whether Dr. Roby was in MIPSers? And yes, she is. Um, I believe she told me she, and I may be wrong on the years, but just short of, uh, the time that she would need to vest into MIPSers. So, clearly she wanted to be in there, um, but also in her evaluation and her review of, of compensation packages for superintendents in Michigan, uh, I believe she felt very strongly that she wanted to have, um, uh, some, uh, annuities, um, like others did. And so, we felt like the, the amount was not exorbitant. It was, um, pretty, it was consistent, um, lower than some, um, a little bit higher than some, but we felt like it was within a reasonable range, um, of, you know, a request for annuities. And, um, you know, there's, this is a three-year contract and there's no guarantee that there will be another. So, I think superintendents, when they're evaluating their compensation packages, they also, um, think about that.
And I think also as we, um, as we have this conversation, it's fair to note that we are aware of what Dr. Roby's current salary is, uh, in her current role, which is not superintendent and she is not, she's not, uh, receiving a hefty raise at all. She's, she's excited to come and do the work, but the level of work compared to what she's doing now, to what it will be when she arrives here, um, you know, I, I think her negotiations, and this is just me speaking personally, have been very fair, um, because there is not a large raise waiting for her here in Michigan, but there is a large scope of work that will be, uh, waiting for her.
I am muted, uh, to, to chime in on this if I can now. Um, I, I guess my first question would be past practice and precedence. Um, have we, you know, what has been our past practice? And, uh, does that not set a precedence that we should be following in this? I, I really, you know, favor the, uh, the annuity. I, I don't think it's out of line, uh, just based from experience, but, uh, the, the question is, what has been our past practice with respect to annuities for our superintendent contracts? And, uh, and is this in line with the amounts? And, uh, should we not follow precedents?
You know, I, I will say real quickly, um, by no means is, uh, am I saying that we should not offer annuity. I simply want to throw it out there for conversation. I honestly, if there is no concern amongst my colleagues, then there's no concern, um, for me as well. It's just simply that it came into my mind, I thought it was appropriate to at least put it out there to get a determination. If others had any similar thoughts, if not, then we can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Pitts, do you have a response for the past practice question? Or just how we have handled this previously?
Well, um, you know, I haven't been here that long, but the, uh, the two superintendents, uh, that I have worked under, uh, Dr. Teresa Neal and, and current interim superintendent, both have annuity, uh, packages. Uh, and this one is, uh, substantially lower than, uh, Ms. Neal's and, uh, uh, just slightly larger than, uh, uh, Dr. Gorman's.
So, again, from, from my perspective, there's no concern from anyone else. That's fine from a past practice perspective, I would say. Um, again, this is not a slight to Roby, but, um, the confidence that both Dr. Gorman and Teresa Neal have in general with us over the years goes without speaking. And so, largely my concern or my question was again, to some extent, um, this is a unproven commodity, um, as far as our direct experience with, uh, with Dr. Roby. So, again, if I'm the only one who had it in my head, that's fine and we can move on.
This is Kim Williams. I have a, a, a question if, if I could, um, to elaborate with regards to that. Um, even beyond the extent of past practices, is there any, um, research done to see if? research done to see if we are on par for someone who is again, taking this role on for the first time? Are we on par with those around the, the West Michigan area?
I, I will ask Ms. Pitts to chime in, but we have in our previous meetings where we went through the contract line for line, we also shared information about the demographics, the outline for MIPSers and annuities and salary and the district size for superintendents in the state and the surrounding areas. I'm not sure if Ms. Pitts has that within reach right now to give us some feedback. But we, it is something that we've reviewed and we can make sure that is shared again.
I, I think though, that the information that we have doesn't say whether these, whether these are first time or renewal, so I wouldn't be able to really tell you that, that information.
Okay.
We, we certainly included when we, I think that it's not, I mean, she was, she was new too. It just does seem to be common practice.
Yes, I think it is. And I think that, I believe Dr. Roby said she had spoke with, I think M A S B. So she got, she did get her information from the Michigan, you know, what was happening here in Michigan. She wasn't using it based on what was happening in her state.
Do we have any other comments or feedback, any other questions that feel like they've been unanswered? I want to make sure that since we're having the conversation, everyone feels like they've been heard and their questions have been responded to. Okay, I don't, I don't want to move on. I know this is our first time back together in a while, so I don't want anyone to feel like I'm moving on without them. If we have no, no more discussion, do I have a motion to approve the contract?
Who were those folks? I just heard voices.
I was one of them. I, I, I said. You know, either way.
Yeah. Okay, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaqie, Ms. Ms. Shaqie?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Carries.
Okay, that's a big step. We, we have an official contract, so we officially officially have a new superintendent.
Right. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, congratulations, you guys. C words are hard for me this evening. But this is, she, she has been very invested in asking questions and hoping to, to hear from our team, hear all the work that they're doing, supporting them and also helping to brainstorm in these really uncertain times. So I think that that says a lot for someone who's willing to do that while they're also in their own district who is going through all of this themselves. So she still had buildings to close and procedures to put in place. And, you know, never did she say, well, let me know when you vote my transition contract in and then I'll, you know, call you guys. She didn't say that, so that says a lot. And it's good to have that in place for our full staff and our full team. As so many other things are really uncertain right now. So thank you for, for the hard work that was put in getting that, that completed. The last action item that we have for this evening is our purchasing agenda. Does anyone need discussion around this? If not, do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So move.
Motion to approve.
So Ms. Williams or Reverend Matthias, would one of you support?
Support.
All right, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
All right, next we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping? Motion for approval?
For.
Prove the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do we take, do we take a vote here?
Christian, please. Do you have the, the?
This is for the consent agenda, right?
Yes, this is for the consent agenda.
Okay. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The only discussion item I have for you all this evening is about the next board meeting. So this is officially our board meeting for April. And we're proposing that our next meeting will be our May meeting, which, Dr. Gorman, can you confirm this for me? May 4th, is that correct?
That is correct, Ms. Grant.
Okay, so May 4th would be our next meeting and it would be a full board meeting again as well. So we're, we're going month by month here. The, the great thing about that meeting is that we will have had a full week of the distance learning in place. So we'll be able to receive feedback on that and evaluate that process. If we were to keep the work session or the previous meeting, the last meeting in April, we wouldn't have had time to gather that feedback. And if possible, we'd really like the staff to be focused on really putting that distance learning process in place. But May 4th would be the, the next meeting. And of course, we will make sure that we get you all the details for all of that as it moves closer.
So will we be doing any of our committee meetings?
At this time, we do not have committee meetings scheduled. We will see how this continues to progress and look at that. At this time, it's a heavy lift for staff and we want to be sure that they're being fully focused on getting our students in that distance learning. So that can, that can definitely change, but for now that's the full focus. Okay, the next thing that we have is public comment.
Well, I'm sorry, can I just chime in? Sorry. I, I just want to make sure that hopefully between now and then, we're getting updates as to any either hiccups or, or issues that are coming up. The other is the, the important stress that it's causing on our families. Certainly, I mean, from work to their children's learning. And so making sure that, that we have some mental health, social, emotional pieces continuing to be either talked about or in place so that our extended partners, many who are, who have partnered with our schools, still have an opportunity to somehow impact and that communication is taking place as to how they can do that ongoing.
Absolutely. None of that will change from this meeting to the May meeting. So as board members, we have received extensive updates. I'm sure you all have had a lot of fun reading all of the emails and updates. But as things change so rapidly, I really appreciate that the staff has kept us abreast of all those things. That will not change, that will continue. The full staff is available at Dr. Gorman's discretion for us to reach out with, with individual questions. So once again, thank you to that essential staff who's been so responsive. And also they have been working really hard to put those social, emotional pieces in place and all of that work will continue and they're working to, to make it better, right? So we know that there's so much to be learned over this time, but, but none of that work will stop. That will continue. Dr. Gorman, do you want to chime in on any of that?
I, I totally agree with you. You, you will continue to get updates and I think something we do better than, than everyone else is the relationships we have with students and families. And the, the social, emotional component is most important during this time, I firmly believe. So we will give you those updates. We will let you know the strategies we're using and the supports that we have in place for our students and our families.
Thank you. So we are going to move to public comment. I'm requesting grace on this portion, but I believe that how this will proceed is that, I'm going to juggle my screens a little bit. How this will proceed is that the, we have received ahead of time, public, basically virtual public comment card survey that allow people to. That's okay, with that allow people to say who, who they are, what their comment is. And that just helps us on this virtual platform. So they are right now being placed in a waiting room and we'll call them one by one and their video will show they'll be able to join us and provide their public comment. Our first speaker is, and please excuse me if I don't get this name correctly, correctly, but Lasaka Nygaard? Lasaka Nygaard? And it'll take a few moments for Craig to be able to toggle them into the full meeting.
Ms. Grant, it doesn't appear that she's present in the meeting.
Okay. Next, we have Mary Balance.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Mary.
Oh, good, you can hear me, thanks. Remote greetings. I just had the dog come down the stairs on me. It's supposed to happen at least once, right? All right. President Grant, interim superintendent Gorman and board members and everyone at home, thank you for the time and opportunity to address you tonight. What a journey this has been. So here's, let me tell you how we've kind of gone about this. We got the executive order on April 2nd and the M E A and local association leaders of Kent County met with the K I S D leadership to create a memorandum of understanding on April 4th. And two days later, we had a coordinated plan that all of the local districts were aware of and were using to kind of work forward and make sure that all the districts were kind of considering the same things at the same time. The M D E then released the continuity of learning template for districts to use, which included the input of school administration, the Board of Education, teachers and local bargaining units. Discussion between the local bargaining units and the district began on April 6th and you have seen the result of that continuity of learning plan tonight. The document that supports the continuity of learning is the distance learning plan. When the distance learning plan was initially referenced in public communication, there was a great deal of staff concern about it. This was due in part to our almost complete exclusion from the development of that plan. Now, so everyone's aware, a host of very productive and open discussions have taken place since our first continuity of learning meeting a week ago. We have, I have never experienced the district and the association coming together so quickly and so productively as I have for this plan. In a week's time, we have come to agreements on contractual issues such as rates of pay and hours to be worked and even spent meaningful time identifying and troubleshooting new legal and logistical issues in the plan itself. While there are still many issues to be figured out, the fact that the various M E A associations are all being scheduled this week to discuss the impact of the plan on their contracts. Special education, teacher evaluation, shared time and redeployment of support personnel in an incredible testimony to everyone's deep dedication to the district and the family it serves, families it serves. Last week, may be proud to serve as the G R E A president, proud to be a member of M E A and proud to be part of the G R P S family. I am confident that as details of this plan are completed over the next week, many of our members will come to understand the direction that we are all headed together. I look forward to speaking with you at the next meeting and sharing my thoughts about the completed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balance.
Thank you.
I do want to make a note that I, I wasn't able to say this before. We are still within our three-minute time limit. So we do have three minutes for, for each person who will be speaking this evening. I am not the time keeper, but I believe that our meeting moderator will give a warning when time is up and because we do have several speakers this evening, we want to make sure we have time for everyone to speak. So that is just a note for everyone. Our next speaker will be Catherine Freericks. I believe that is.
Hello.
Hello. Did I have that name correctly?
Correctly enough.
Okay. My apologies. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Freericks and I'm a member of St. Mark's Episcopal Church here in Grand Rapids. And our church, along with several other churches and nonprofits, have joined together and on a number of issues, but one of them that some of us in that association are interested in is this whole question of how parents in the school system get the help that they need. And certainly teachers will be providing that in part, but we're wondering who is, we're assuming that volunteers will be working with the teachers and who's in charge of setting that up? And I know about the, what is it called? The pre-approved Grand Rapids volunteers, but do you need more? How are they chosen, all of that? So the whole support system for parents is something that we're interested in and would like to help with if we can.
Thank you. Another note, I don't have my nifty reference card to read everything all at once. Another note for people, if this is your first time joining us in a board meeting, we are unable to respond during public comment, but we do take all of your information. And if there are questions or requests that you all have, we do follow up. So there will definitely be follow-up on that question about the volunteer piece. And we'll make sure that Dr. Gorman's office is, is able to do that. So thank you very much for that. Next, we have Edith Garcia. Hello, Ms. Garcia, can you hear us?
Yeah, the mic is on the lower left of your Zoom.
Okay, Craig, if we'd like to move to the next person and give Ms. Garcia a moment. Next, we have Tabitha Williams.
Ms. Grant, Tabitha Williams does not appear to be in the meeting.
Okay. Alexis Boydin?
Alexis Boydin does not appear to be in the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should check the attendance. Okay, I'm sorry, I should check the attendee list, but we do want to at least call their name. And lastly, and then we'll go back to Edith, but lastly, I have Jasmine Fuentes.
Hello.
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 Hi, I'm a GRPS parent. And I've also part of the organizing team, the Grand Rapids organizing team that Catherine was talking about. And we've been calling around and talking to lots of parents and teachers and community organizers. And trying to learn what it is that are the biggest concerns and how organizations can all come together to work on some of these. And of course, the digital divide is the biggest one. And what we've learned is that there are a lot more people than we realized who don't know how to use a computer at all. I didn't realize that that was still an issue. Because I would, I would think that in high school you would learn how to use it, but not everybody has, has had that opportunity. And so a lot of parents are asking for really, really step by step, very, very basic teaching. Training like walkthroughs of what it, how you even go to the GRPS website and find the online. Learning resources tab, that's even too hard for a lot of people. And so I thought that that was very interesting and important for us to know. And I was wondering whether there was a way to help a lot of these community organizations like. Boys and girls clubs, neighborhood associations, churches, the literacy center, in addition to the, the whole long list of GRPS volunteers that you have, who have all been background checked and everything. To, a lot of those institutions have GRPS students as their constituents. And so they could actually reach out to their own collection of GRPS students and say, and help with these efforts of. Tracking down the ones who aren't logging in all the time. I think that's awesome that you're able to see who's logging in and who isn't. Because, you know, people might say that they have access, but they actually are not really, they're embarrassed to say that they don't. And so this is a great way for people to track down the people on their street or in their club. And so I was wondering if that's something that, I really hope that GRPS does not try to just use the small staff. That's available to hunt people down, hunt down the students who are having trouble connecting. And then, and then the other thing I wanted to say is that the online resources that are on that GRPS. Homepage or on the online res- learning resources page are fantastic. And I used to homeschool my children and I used resources just like that all the way through. And they are, they're very good resources. And so I'm hoping that you all will consider putting those forth as legitimate. Resources for those who are having trouble clicking into the more complicated distance learning plan. And not see those as secondary or just enrichment. My daughter, when she did make it into GRPS, was the valedictorian of her class and so.
Grant, the time has run out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Fuentes, we appreciate your comments. And I believe there may have been a portion that needed follow up, so we will make sure that that happens. Thank you very much for, for sharing comments. I realize how close my face is to the screen when I'm navigating these documents. Excuse me, I'm getting back to the agenda. Okay, so that completes our public comment for this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Craig, is Edith Garcia still with us?
One moment and I'll try to bring her in.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
So is the school year going, going to end? Or are we, you guys have a program that you guys are gonna keep students on?
Okay, Ms. Ms. Garcia, we're, during public comment, I'm very sorry, during public comment, we're unable to respond. But I would like to say that in the next portion, in one of the next portions for our agenda, Dr. Gorman, the superintendent, will be reviewing a plan. Which is a plan we just voted to enact and that will give a lot of details for you. But please let us know if you have any other comment that you would like to share.
No, I don't.
Okay, so please stay, stay on the line with us and you'll be able to hear some more about this plan going forward. Okay. Okay, we've completed public comment, next we have superintendent's comments.
Your, your mic is not out.
Thank you, Reverend Matthias, sorry about that, I was doing so well with that earlier. So now that the plan, Madam, Madam President and members of the board, now that the plan has been approved, I would like to walk through some very important timelines. This week is professional learning for our administrators. I engaged in professional learning this morning with approximately 100 administrators from the district, both building based and central office. The principals and central office folks are being trained in the modules that their teachers will be responsible for in the, the coming weeks. We are granting building access this week to our teachers so they can get in and grab the materials they need to support online learning. They have already been, the staff members have already been notified of these dates. On Monday, April 20, all of our employees will report back, most of whom will report back remotely. And their immediate supervisors will be working with them as it relates to job responsibilities. But April 20 is the date that our employees are coming back to work remotely. Monday, April 20 through Friday, April 24, and then maybe a little into the next week is when we will have our technology distribution. This not only includes our Chromebooks, our tablets, but also our hotspots. We are making appointments, we will be making appointments with families, they will have a designated time, they will, they will pull up to one of our four sites, we will ensure social distancing happens. They will get their devices, it will be a seamless process. On April 20, on April 20 through April 22, there will be professional learning for our teaching staff, so that will take place next week. The teachers will have online modules that they'll have to go to, to prepare themselves. And we're hopeful to have what we call a soft launch on Thursday, April 23 through Friday, April 24. Where our, our teachers can familiarize themselves with technology, potentially reach out to families, make sure things are good to go. Before we officially restart our learning on Monday, April 27. So that is a timeline of events that includes professional learning for building administrators as well as teachers, technology distribution, a soft launch. And then, of course, the first day back on April 27. Again, we have over 15,000 students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We are the largest district in West Michigan, one of the largest districts in the state of Michigan. We have a tremendous amount of technology to distribute, lots of folks to engage in professional learning. But we are going to be ready to go on April 27 and meet the, meet the, meet the timeline that the governor has provided for us. We're very proud of this plan and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Dr. Gorman, can you please also share just about. The dates for the school year as they stand right now?
Yes, so we are, we are working with our student data systems department to determine. When the last day of school will be. I don't want to give a definitive date right now, but it's not going to be too far away from the initial date that we put out at the, at the beginning of the school year. So we may have to add a day or two, Ms. Grant, we will finalize that this week, we'll count up our, our hours, our days. And then we will get back to you with a formal notification as well as distribute that information to our community. But we don't anticipate going considerably longer, but we will, we will be close to our final date right now, which is the first week of June.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Gorman? Okay, thank you again for, for the hard work that your team has put into that plan and the hard work that will happen to, to really implement that plan. Thank you in advance for that. We're gonna do board members' comments and I'm just going to, to go in the order that I see you. So Ms. Lewis, do you have any final comments? We can't, we can't hear you.
Turn that off, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. I just wanted to tell the administration, the teachers, Dr. Gorman and his cabinet. How much I admire this work because I was a English department chair, I had eight English teachers that I worked with. We had this small high school compared to what we deal with here in GRPS. But I did curriculum for the English department and I know how difficult that is. It is so hard. And yet here these people are just winging it and starting something totally new, something that's never been done before. And I have the greatest admiration for everybody who's been involved in this. And I would love to help in some way, so Dr. Gorman, figure out a way that I can do it from my home. But it's been great, I, I'm just really proud and that all of you are so hardworking and I'm just sitting home here, so what's new, huh?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Shaki.
Thank you. I am just so overwhelmed with gratitude, I find, I suspect that's what you're gonna hear across the board tonight. You know, life is unlike it's ever been and. Like so many in our district, I'm home, you know, working and, and now balancing a family. And I, I just want to say thank you to our administrators, to our teachers, to our food service workers, to our public safety. We see you and I know that you're doing the exact same thing I am, but you're working even harder than I am. And I'm just, yeah, overwhelmed with gratitude for what you're doing. As a parent of a 13-year-old and an eight-year-old in a district, I feel so taken care of. Both from enrichment activities and check-ins from teachers. And I know these next weeks you're gonna be working really hard to pivot in a way that you've never had to pivot before. And so I got your back and thank you and I'm just so humbled. Thank you to our community partners, Kids Food Basket, Affinity Mentoring, so many that I don't even know. But again, we just see you out there in the community, making sure that we have what we need and I'm humbled and grateful, so thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Matthias.
Yeah, I just, again, want to echo a lot of the, a lot of the sincere sentiments. It was really exciting to hear from the MEA and just how they have come together, working with the district and the district working with them. For the best outcome possible, given the circumstance. Just in talking to a lot of people, you know, the two-on-one number is an important number to memorize if you don't know it. And that's just where you can get help. Even parents are having to figure out now some of the educational needs. Even the parent that, that spoke tonight concerned about, you know, the school year, it's just gonna be really important. Never have we, I think, felt more connected in our disconnection, so to speak. And this has definitely, as a, as a major district in Michigan, has allowed us to again reconnect like we never have before. People are reaching out to each other and making sure that they're okay, just like our, our student government person said, that they're checking on some of the seniors. To make sure that they're okay and so, and we're doing the same thing in our neck of the woods. So really proud of our district, our teachers, our parents, who have it now tougher, having their kids there. And so, yeah, we just want to, as Ms. Shaki said, we, we have your back. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question, Dr. Gorman, and so if you don't mind, at the end of board member comments, I'll loop back to you. One thing that I'm looking over from these public comment is there was a question about graduation and specific information for seniors. We didn't touch on that, I want to make sure we do. So we'll, we'll complete this and then I'd like to come back if, if we can. Mr. Ross.
I guess all I can do is second all the, those kudos and gratitude I already mentioned. One I think was forgotten, those kudos to you, Ms. Grant, for navigating such a, you know, weird sort of thing for this first time out. Good job, it went probably much smoother than you could have hoped for, so good job on that, really. Also, definitely, congrats to all of us, Dr. Roby and the district and all the stakeholders, as we now officially have something that really ready to move us all forward. And really just excited about the opportunities for, for everyone that's connected to, to, to what we just signed off for. So really just excited about that and really just thanks to the attendees who took some time out to really be engaged in this Zoom platform. So as community members, really just appreciate your continued support and involvement. And just, again, thanks to everybody. And I think Reverend Matthias, you may have put it best about us being, you know, so connected during what is somewhat of a disconnected time. There's definitely been a, a good spirit going around in that regard and hopefully we can bottle that and continue to move that, move forward with that sort of energy. So just thanks and appreciation to everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Flores.
Well, most everything has been said, but I'd like to also echo, you know, the congratulations to our, to our, our leadership team and, and certainly to you. Ms. Grant for leading this group in, in such a new endeavor. Again, too, like Mr. Matthias said, you know, the parents here, they, they really need a lot of support because not everybody is tech savvy. And I hope that, that we're able to provide the support that our parents need during these difficult times and the answers. So again, congratulations to everyone and certainly congratulations to all of you board members who, who collectively were, were able to. Elect a new superintendent or, or agree on a new superintendent, agree on a contract. And I think I'm like everybody else, you know, ready to move forward, come out of this social distancing thing in the future here. And, and hopefully everybody is, is, is practicing good, good practices and, and that we're all healthy at the end of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Davis, it's like popcorn.
I would just like to basically echo what you all have said and it's been so wonderful to see all of your faces after such a long time. But I'm very proud of our district, I'm proud of our admin team. And just want to encourage everyone in our community to continue to reach out and make sure you're making connections with each other. Even though we are isolated. So if you have concerns or questions regarding our plan moving forward, make sure you're reaching out and checking in with each other. And I know our admin team is super responsive, so if you reach out to any of us, we'll relay the message and make sure that those questions get answered. And we can get the help that our students need to move forward, so.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Baker.
Hey. Again, I go what everybody else has been saying, it's really proud as, as Reverend Matthias pointed out, the Mary Balance, Balance comments, you know, just says a lot about. Where we're at as a district and it's, I'm proud to be a part of. Group that is so collaborative and sharing with people and everybody deserves all the thanks that they've been getting. You know, I see teachers on my Facebook feed and, you know, just the attitudes and eagerness to be helpful, the community response and how many other people are feeding. to be helpful, the community response, and how many other people are feeding children and families. And it's pretty remarkable. So really appreciate, I'm really happy, I'm really looking forward to Superintendent Roby being here. She's got big shoes to fill, and Dr. Gorman getting us through this. But I'm really happy where we're at and moving forward. So thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
I'd like to thank my colleagues for us finalizing the contracts for Dr. Roby in a collaborative fashion. I'd like to thank the district staff, from the superintendent, Dr. Gorman, down to the volunteers and custodial staff, food service staff, everyone that's been involved. I personally feel supported and in this process by the communication from the district, and I hope our students and families do as well. I'd like to encourage our staff to stay positive and that your labor in this has not been in vain. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Gorman, if we can come back to you?
Absolutely. So, Ms. Grant, as it relates to seniors, I feel so sad for our seniors and their families right now. And there are some neighboring districts that have already canceled commencement. There are some neighboring districts that have rescheduled for some time in the summer. I would like to hold off a couple weeks and see where we are from a social distancing perspective, whether it's a large-scale commencement ceremony that we've all been accustomed to throughout the years, or something on a smaller scale. At this time, I do not want to cancel. I wanna, I wanna see what's out there. I want to do what's best for our students. Our seniors need to be recognized. So we would like to see what happens with Governor Whitmer with the, at the end of this executive order, and then early may make a decision as it relates to commencements. Connected to seniors, our team is doing credit audits right now to determine who was on pace when we left in March. So those students who were on pace when we left in March, we're gonna do our very best to ensure that they get diplomas and transcripts and things of that nature in a timely manner. And we will also use this period of time, the next five weeks, to get some students caught up who may have fallen a little bit behind. But I'm still holding out a little hope that we can recognize our seniors in a way that they all deserve.
Thank you. Finally, I will just end with, thank you all. I miss you all, but I know we are all adjusting to, I don't want to call it the new normal, but what the, the new normal for right now. Thank you all for saying thank you to me, but honestly, we know that this team, that they're hard workers and that they've, they've done this on their own. So I just want to give a huge kudos to them and excited to get our students re-engaged. Thank you to the parents who have been engaged. And if there are ways that we can help, as Mrs. Davis said, please reach out to us. It's really an all-hands-on-deck time right now. So thank you all again. And if there is no further business, I will say the meeting is adjourned.